I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and free of any jurisdiction.
Now we have minutes for the 12/20/21. Okay, we didn't see anything, so I'll make the motion we approve the minutes, December twentieth to twenty-one.
And I'll second that.
Now we have payroll to approve in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and five cents. Is it a little higher than anything special?
Um, no, it was pretty normal.
Okay. I think we should approve payroll in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand, two sixty-seven dollars.
I'll second that. Now we have received a payroll claims accounts payable report in the amount of fifty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents.
The motion we acknowledge received payroll claims account payable, fifty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine, twenty-six.
I'll second that, motion passed. Now we have claims in the amount of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, thirty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. It's been around the end of the year, stuff in there.
Yeah, she said, so if it all didn't really seem right, so I make a motion to approve claims in the amount of four seventy-seven, oh thirty-one, thirty-seven.
No, I'll second that, motion carried.
Just on those.
Yeah, so whatever she's got ready.
And then one, we had a community, um, December the sixth, and we've got, and you guys approved it, and we've got to sit.
I'll write twenty-one before I start to do this, or twenty-two.
Okay, new business, twenty-twenty-one wage compensation. This is required to be put on Facebook on Gateway and advertising the paper, but only on the list, which is on Gateway.
Yes, you will be doing that this week to be putting this in the paper. I've got advertised yet, but I wanted to present it to you guys before I advertised it.
It just shows the total.
This is all the wages, uh, this is all the wages that the county has paid out for the year of twenty-twenty-one.
I don't think we have to do it, because now it's for law, you have to do all that. I needed to make a motion on, all right, and so on the new business, can you have any new business, please?
Do not, yeah. How about old business?
I need a signature from you on the sales disclosure form, um, since Jim's not here, just one other thing, probably Dan. That's for the redevelopment tax sale properties that.
Okay, is it?
You just have to sign in one spot.
Fire number one, or?
Nah, hold on, it's up here at the top, like, right there, signature seller. And this is on the, um, I forget which property it is.
Market Street property.
Yeah. It just allows us to complete those set of transactions, the last one we have to do.
And I guess I should, I've got a little bit of new business, uh, question for you, Nick.
Yeah.
Uh, Thompson's out there, they had had that piece of property, remember, a few years ago, and I think they had sold some pieces off, the bridge was washed out years ago. There's still one of our house back there, possibly even our MC line, but, and they wanted us to build a new bridge, I don't even think that road is even on the.
It's not on our, uh.
Inventory. When it came to Chris, I wanted him to name it, does that make us liable if we get that road named? Should it be something put up with, it's nothing urgent right now, but it's something we probably shouldn't check into, I mean.
Yeah.
I think they was wanting to develop it, but even, you get out, out the lake, you got Paradise Bay, it's a private road, uh, I don't know.
I don't think if we name it, it puts us a liability, but let me look at it and I can gather.
They'll table it until the next meeting, so.
I'd rather have a chance to research it.
Yeah, what we expect you to.
Is that in Rockton Township?
No, Jackson.
Jackson Township?
Yeah.
Is that Rocky Fork, is that what he said?
Yeah, it's out there off of, I don't remember, maybe seven twenty, I'm not sure, seven twenty or one thousand.
Okay, yeah.
If it needs to be re, uh, named due for emergency purposes, ambulance service or whatever.
We'll have a problem.
I'll pay with that, but if it implies that when we name the road, it implies that you're accepting that road as in our inventory, then we'd be responsible for possibly.
That, that's the distinction, if we put on an inventory, then we are, but if, if we're just making it for E nine-one-one purposes, it shouldn't, but let me look at it, just.
And I think, uh.
I, I can't imagine.
I think Chris said if he give the number, it would be like eight fifty if they.
Yeah, Jim, log that off, yeah.
We'll get rid of these things, you won't have to watch yourself.
Yeah, I mean, that's my off the cuff thought, but I, I would like to look at it real quick.
Do you have any other business, Nick?
Uh, no, I just had the sales disclosures.
Do you have any other, Bruce? All right, Justin, you're the man.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, currently fifty-five inmates in jail, uh, forty-five runners, ten are DOC, uh, zero other county holds, one with COVID currently, um, we ended the year for twenty-twenty-one for DOC housing at a hundred and forty-five thousand, six sixty-nine, and this year, which we're running off December's billing that we would receive this month, it's thirteen thousand, thirteen dollars for the month to start this year out with. Um, a couple of numbers for year end stats, there was seventy-one thousand, ninety-one meals served in twenty-twenty-one in the jail, uh, seven hundred and thirty-three new inmates were booked into the jail. Uh, currently we have two deputy openings and one dispatch opening and a maintenance opening, we still have one deputy out on medical, we did interviews today for one of the deputy positions, so we've got a couple more days of interviews on it, um, and there's two police cars, they should have been delivered, I think, in September and October, we're still waiting on ships on them still, so I don't know when we'll get them, but the, the two cars that are going to replace are still in pretty decent condition, got high miles, but they're still mechanical free for the most part, so, and then in the back of the packet I give you, is the, uh, compensation agreement for this year for me, but we can wait till the next meeting when.
It's not a big issue, I mean, Jim's likely to be there next time he.
Oh, it's not, okay.
I don't know, they're either.
It's just got, it's got a place for the president.
We don't want you to miss a payment, miss, miss being paid, it's not a problem. You have an original lawyer, or?
I've got the, I've got the original.
We can go ahead and.
Is that your same formula issue?
It, yeah, the, the rate's still the same, eighty-five thousand, you're, nothing's changed, it's the exact same one, we just changed the years on it.
Yeah, we're good, there's no reason why to February, I guess. Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Well, I presented the council meeting to for this month.
Maybe I have to say this every year, but just a clarification for those watching and for Jessica, uh, sheriff can be paid numerous different ways by statute, uh, Justin has chosen, uh, what's called a contract, and so what we're doing is basically signing the contract with Justin for his compensation for the year twenty-twenty-two, so I make a motion that we approve the compensation agreement contract with the, uh, with Sheriff Cole.
And I'll second that, motion taken.
Thank you. That's all that I had.
Our sheriff, our deputies fairly, I don't see easy, that's, it's easy to fill anymore, but are deputies fairly easy to find somebody with any qualifications, or?
Not in this climate, or?
What I figure, so.
Probably had a, one of the smaller amounts apply, and yeah, not, none of them had the academy, which is.
Most of them will have to go through the academy if you.
Yeah, which is unusual, we usually have a couple people may have had the academy before on some other department, weren't they?
Very busy, new year's Eve.
Yeah, it, it is pretty eventful, so.
I think all you need to do, yeah, you'll need to have that back checked to the council meeting.
I can keep it, or you can keep it, whichever one, I just, I need to present it to the council.
I can take it to the council.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll just put it in the council folder.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you, Justin, have a good evening. And actually, before Kim, Randy's not here for.
He's here, he's.
Is he here for, get two pairs of waders, those in the back, I think that's something on your mind.
I did want to talk to Broadband MOU, I think, right?
Yeah, Josh.
Yeah, Josh is.
Okay.
Which is joint, I think, right, Josh?
Yeah, you, you come on up and, no, you go ahead now.
Okay.
We'll give Randy a minute, because he's got some paperwork there, and you bring that up here and set it so you don't have to hold it.
Thanks for working me in, I, I was catching up on Cindy's email, well, my email in general today, I noticed the meeting tonight, and so I wanted to be sure and, uh, take advantage of this meeting opportunity, since we only have one more before the application is due. Um, I have brought with me the, the same financial summary that we had before, and the same map that we had before, I'll go ahead and pass those to you, just so you have them for reference while we're talking, but the, the big thing I'd like to talk through, if I understand the process, is that the council has appropriated money at this point in time, um, but they've asked us, and this is a bit new for us, in the other counties, we've just been provided a joint resolution signed by the county council and county commissioners that, um, basically memorializes the funding that's available, but, uh, in this case, my understanding is that the next step was for me to meet with the commissioners and ratify a memorandum of understanding, um, and Cindy's provided me with that form, so assuming I understand the process correctly, I brought with me, uh, my attempt at editing the, kind of the draft or the form of MOU, uh, to make it, uh, joint specific, um, and I hope that we might be able to talk through this together and see if I'm on the right track or not, does that work? So, uh, we just, uh, in the third paragraph, we just specifically made reference to joint and that this is for broadband connectivity, uh, in order to make reference back to the next level connectivity grant application, I just defined the term next level connectivity as NLC, um, I added another recital just indicating that, uh, we had submitted a letter of intent, uh, which was required underneath the grant, just so that you know we're eligible to respond to it, um, and then there's quite a bit of specifics later on the number of addresses, and, and just to avoid confusion and, and the risk of some duplication, I redlined out, um, some of the eligible addresses and/or eligible addresses passing, uh, so just to avoid a risk of confusion there, I, I suggested that we remove that language and then, um, specifically make reference to joint, since, since we're already the agreement, um, and then I thought it was really nice the way the past addresses language was written in item three, and so I tried to just bring that past addresses language back up into one, uh, so the park county board of commissioners agree to provide local match funding for broadband providers based upon the eligible addresses which have been awarded, uh, to broadband provider as, as well as past addresses, so I was just trying to bring that same past addresses concept and terminology up into one, and then in six, uh, since I defined joint as a provider previously, I just capitalized the P for provider, um, and then in B, um, what, what we have, have said all along, um, and what we have committed to with the other counties, um, and so for consistency's sake, I need to stick with what, what I've always said, and that is that, um, and I've got it on the map, so those fifty-three eligible addresses, those will be a free installation, um, the, the zero to one hundred feet addresses, those three hundred and eight will be a two hundred and fifty dollar installation fee, but, but we need to charge per foot past the first hundred addresses for those remaining four hundred and twelve, and I recognize that not all providers may need to do that, uh, for example, if they're using an existing phone wire or phone line that's already going to those homes, uh, they may be able to reuse that at lower speeds, uh, but when we're building fiber all the way to the home, um, in our analysis, uh, this, this provision, um, would actually, uh, it's a non-starter for joint, the, the cost for us to extend to all of those homes, a two hundred and fifty dollar fee, is actually greater than the amount of support we're requesting from you, um, so it, just to use some nice big round numbers, that, that's basically asking joint, uh, to commit to provide two million dollars worth of installations for one million dollars in support, it's just, it doesn't work, so, and, and it's not what we've done in the other counties either, and so for consistency's sake, um, I, I redlined that back to what I've said in all of my prior presentations and, and public meetings and public comments, that, uh, so to point A, any eligible address will be a free installation, um, and then in, in point six B, the first hundred feet will, will only be a two hundred and fifty dollar install fee, but after the first hundred feet, so for those remaining four hundred and twelve addresses, we'll need to charge those customers based on their distance, um, of, of network that has to be constructed.
Over and above the.
Yes, not any different than what a homeowner has to do to extend gas or water or some other utility on their private property, um, and then, just because we're, um, we're new to this MOU concept, and, um, there's, there's a lot of language in the document, just for the avoidance of doubt, as long as joint's application is as shown on the map, fifty-three eligible addresses, seven hundred and twenty addresses passed, uh, the, the match of support that would be provided by the county would be nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, so I just wanted to, to have that in there so that there's no confusion about how this all tallies out down the road.
I, I, I think still, though, if I understood the council was pretty adamant about it, um, are they still that way, Cindy, I mean, if, if you can't make an agreement with the homeowner to pay the difference, I don't, I mean, I don't see getting paid for, once it gets passed, if they're not going to be paid for by the homeowner.
I'm not following, I'm sorry.
Um, per eligible address, it's a maximum of thirteen hundred dollars, correct?
Uh, no, 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 for per eligible address, it needs to be like nine hundred and thirty-six thousand divided by fifty-three, whatever that would be, um, I mean, that, that's the only way we're gonna pass those addresses, is if, is if we're able to get the state to fund these fifty-three addresses.
The fifty-three, yes, I understand that.
Right, yeah, so, so the way, we really need to think about it just as eligible addresses, and when we think about as eligible addresses, it's nine hundred and thirty-six thousand divided by fifty-three, or seventeen thousand dollars, uh, an eligible address. Once we've built to those eligible addresses, we'll then be passing these ineligible locations, and to the extent that those folks want to sign up, we're thrilled to do it, but we'll never pass them if we don't get to the eligible addresses.
I fully understand that part, uh, but they seem to be, I know the council's pretty adamant about the distance and the charge for the distance, is that the way you gathered it, Cindy, or, yeah, if you've got something, say, you can come on up here.
I need to get to the last meeting, so, I thought the council said, we're getting, we're gonna pay so much per property, period.
My understanding is that's how they calculated the amount of support they're providing.
How we calculated what they appropriated, right?
Yeah, yeah, so, so I think, I think they appropriated a million.
Five, or up to one point.
That's right, and using that formula of eligible and passed, we're requesting support for nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, so we're using that, that formula to compute this amount, uh, but all the state cares about is eligible homes, and so we've gotta go to the state with our two hun, our three hundred and thirty-seven thousand and your nine hundred and thirty-six thousand in order to get funding for fifty-three, the, the ineligible homes aren't any part of their analysis.
Yeah, that's on the grant side of things, and I think just, again, locally, how we calculated was using a prime household, whether it be eligible or passed.
Sure, right.
As a calculation for us, and the adamant part from the ARP committee, as well as the council, was they were not comfortable passing on that additional charge to some taxpayers and not others, because they don't care if they were eligible or not in the grant, um, and felt that they didn't really have a good story behind that to pass on additional expense to some and not others, and that's, that's the reasoning for asking in the MOU to have no additional charge after the two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes, okay, that's a non-starter, we won't make the application, is that requirement? I'm sorry, I mean, it's.
No, understandable.
You're asking, you're asking joint to take north of two million dollars of exposure for one million dollars in support, I can't do it. I, I didn't understand that piece, but, yeah, I, I can see how some other providers, uh, for example, a provider that can reuse the existing copper cable that's in the ground, uh, those economics might work for them, uh, we want this to be a smashing success, and so if all of those homes sign up in the first six months, I'll be upside down on the project, I just can't do it.
No, understandable, and, and I know that's a policy that conflicts, but that was, um, basically direction from the ARP committee.
That's not the way I understood it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would just, um, I've only had about thirty seconds to, to think about that, but, um, the, the way I would look at it, is we have an opportunity to get three hundred and sixty-one homes served, fifty-three for a zero dollar install fee and three hundred and eight for two fifty, uh, based on my analysis, the average install cost for the remaining four hundred and twelve homes is, um, I'm doing this out of, off the top of my head, but between a thousand and two thousand dollars a home, so it's not an insurmountable fee, uh, to get, to get, um, six million dollars of net investment into the county, uh, on a product that has a useful life of twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years.
Understood, yeah.
When's the next council meeting, or, Tuesday, is it this week, this Thursday?
Next Thursday.
A week from Thursday.
Not this Thursday, next Thursday.
When's your application deadline again?
It's due the twentieth, uh, we're, that's one of the reasons I just came right up here this afternoon, is I've worked on this this afternoon, is, uh, we need to get all of our, we need to finalize the details of the application and get the professional engineer stamp, so I'd hate to push this much past that meeting, that's the night of the seventeenth, so I didn't want to wait and show up the night of the seventeenth, I wanted to come to today.
And I'm glad you came, but I'm just going back through everything I heard from the council and from what Cindy's told me, and that's why I want to get to the bottom of it before.
I appreciate that, yeah, I, I didn't.
It's, it's not just our decision, so.
Oh, yeah, and I, and I didn't understand, um, the, the mechanics here, but, um, that's, from day one, I, I've explained how the math works, uh, we've got a, I can't come up here and enter a different transaction than I've entered with the other counties, um, and, and so if for no other reason than the precedent with the other counties, um, I mean, I literally have a joint resolution that has the dollar amount of support, and so I tried to edit the MOU to be consistent with what will be in our application, what we've said in the meetings up until this date, um, I can't, can't agree to that provision as, as stated.
Yeah, and that would really be, the ARP committee would need to reconvene and have that discussion, uh, you know, just to confirm or, or willingness to reconsider and then bring it back, because the commissioners technically is, is the body that would sign that MOU.
Yes, yep.
So it, it does become your decision based on those recommendations?
Yes, it does, but.
Yeah, there was.
We're dealing with the council, and, yes, we've got.
Yeah, one of the, one of the reasons I didn't put all that together entirely is that, um, I read the council resolution in its entirety, and it, it was, uh, very straightforward in appropriating the funds, and, um, I'm, I'm sorry for the confusion, but I read that this email, the next step is meet with the commissioners, and that's, that's, that's the backstory, so.
And I, I have no problem if you guys have a different recommendation, but I don't want to do something that's.
One, one of the challenges with that formula is that if another provider, for example, is gonna use the copper DSL infrastructure that they already have, and let's say their project costs, uh, one million, one hundred thousand dollars, you're providing them one million and four thousand dollars of support, it's gonna cost them ninety-six thousand bucks, so there's some real challenges, I think, now that I understand, uh, what you're doing and how you're applying it, um, in, in taking this approach, in that, uh, it's, it's heavily incentivized to whatever the lowest capex solution is, uh, which may be very short-sighted.
Yeah, and I would just say the last comment there, in thinking about, you know, the way that calculation was done, was hoping that while you may have some that may not sign up, or you may have hopefully fewer at that longer distance, that what you're not using on one could kind of make up for where other things, other than the thirteen hundred, doesn't really get you much past the one hundred feet.
Uh, well, the, but the challenge is that, uh, if we look at how that's kind of, how that's bifurcated, how that's allocated between the two buckets, three, three hundred and eight are within a hundred feet, uh, and, and four hundred and twelve are over a hundred feet, and so I would say the average distance, and I have the data set in the car, but I could go get it, but I think the average distance between zero and a hundred, just as nice round numbers, is like sixty to ninety feet, right, it's all on the high end, uh, and so, there's, the sum of the leftover doesn't.
It's not enough.
Doesn't move the needle on the one hundred and one to three hundred times four hundred and twelve versus being multiplied by, by three hundred eight, I learned early in my career, the challenge with, uh, taking small numbers and multiplying them by big numbers, uh, and that's why I'm so sensitive to, to making sure that this cash flows. Unfortunately, at, at my level, and when I do make mistakes, they're typically not small numbers. [laughing]
I would say, I mean, we could try to convene the ARP committee as quickly as possible and get a final...
And I'd be happy to talk to them.
If you want me to get a final answer, I have a copy of this.
I drafted it.
Not in Josh's markups, no, I don't have that, but...
You straighten mine. I'll give you a second. There are a couple things I was gonna say, if you help.
I think what it comes down to is...
We're gonna try to get the committee as quick as we can, Dan won't be here, but we could do this on Zoom.
He'll do it, he'll go Zoom.
But Roy did a lot of the work on that.
Yes, he did.
If you could get a copy of that to Roy, maybe he'd be willing to, you know...
Yeah, and as like Cindy said, ultimately, it's the commissioner's decision, but we're probably going to go with her recommendation.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I just didn't want us to miss this chance, as I was catching up on things this afternoon to talk, so, and I appreciate your help.
At least what I've said, you know, we don't want to miss this chance either. This is an opportunity to use our federal money for benefit to the county, and we all feel very strongly about that broadband is important to our community, and we want to, but this committee also said, "This is what we're going to do," and this is kind of the guidelines, and for us as commissioners, all of a sudden just saying, "Well, life we live in, the hell with ARP recommendation, we're gonna go with something else." You know, we just, I don't think, we feel comfortable with that at this point in time.
That's not my style either, I just didn't want to show up on the seventeenth with no time to spare.
And I'm glad you came today, maybe we could get this hashed out.
Get this hashed out over the next week or so.
Maybe reach a happy medium.
Yes, the way I would encourage you to look at this is, you're almost getting seven to one money, you know, on what you're at, so...
With the money that we have to work with, though, we're trying to get as many people to have access to it as possible, without, because I think you're gonna find out, there's a lot of them that, when you're talking fifteen hundred and two thousand dollars, they're not gonna be able to afford.
Well, so, a couple of thoughts. One is, I'm probably not willing to waver or negotiate in my position because of what we've done with the other counties. That's the biggest challenge I've got, is I can't go back to those counties.
What they've got to understand, okay, when you're dealing with Putnam County, or you're dealing with Clay County, or you're dealing with Vigo County, we are not there, okay? Our financial, our economic base, our average income of the people who live in Park County are not Putnam County, are not Clay County. You guys got all kinds of industries down there, you got high-paying jobs, you got good-paying jobs, we don't have that here. And so for somebody to have, like Dan said, for somebody to have to pay two thousand dollars, that may be one-tenth of their income.
Sure, nobody will...
You think they're gonna pay two thousand dollars to hook up a pile of that, the whole thing?
Well, a couple of things, one is, I'm doing everything I can to drive those costs lower, so I've just started, I've just started a new crew that's getting really, really good at fiber tory plowing these drops, and I think I can bring that cost per foot down considerably, that is not a profit center for us, we're simply trying to recover costs, and we can come up to Park County and practice a lot. So we've invested a lot of money in Park County, we love coming up here, we're very committed to this community. What I'm concerned about is entering a materially different agreement, and then having to explain to the other counties why I did that. So that cost per foot, I will bring that down for everyone as aggressively as I can on those drops in the future.
I know you will, and I know, let's say, we want this as bad as yours, it's just that, we're just starting to compare apples and apples, like, we got three million dollars.
Sure.
Okay, I don't know what Clay County got, okay, but let's just say they got ten million dollars. That's a big difference in what they can do and what we can do, and so, it's just, you know, it's an number crunching thing, that we have to be careful, and the committee, you know, was just looking at from the standpoint of trying to maximize what we can, without using all of it, obviously, as far as ARP money, but then, as Cindy said, the committee just felt like it was important to be fair to everybody as far as the hookup, and...
I don't want you to feel singled out, because it's not just internet services, Park County, we've got seven hundred and thirty mile road, Randy has about six million dollars to work with to take care of that amount of road, look at Hamilton County, almost the same amount of road, and they had twenty-six million dollars to deal with, so we're dealing with the same footage with less money to do it with, and that's kind of why it was, I'm afraid what's going to happen, these seven hundred and twenty to get passed, less than half of them's gonna have the money to go ahead and hook up to get passed, is what concerns me, and that's kind of why it was structured that way.
Sure, and so, as I sit here and look at my own drafting that I did hurriedly this afternoon, you know, I'm happy a six B plus a per foot charge not to exceed fifteen dollars, I mean, we're willing to work as hard as we can to break even on getting those people connected, we're not trying to make money getting them connected, but back of the envelope, if I take that many feet times that many homes, it's well north of a million dollars of potential cost.
And I understand where you're positioned too, except let's let Cindy see what she can come up with, and maybe you can come to the next meeting, maybe we can reach and agree.
I appreciate all the help, and I didn't mean to be comparative in any regard.
I think it's because, it's like Bruce said, you know, we're a small county, we're in the industry, and we stretch our dollars as far as we can.
Just remember, I'm the tiny little service provider competing against the whole sense of the world, I get small versus big, and I've been on the other side of the table in different forums, and I'm always rooting for the underdog, and I'll do anything I can to help you up here.
All right.
My next meeting is on Tuesday, the eighteenth.
Yes, because of...
Commissioner meeting, yes, it is the eighteenth, sorry, after Martin Luther King Day.
Yeah, so it will be two weeks from tomorrow.
No, on a Tuesday.
Yeah.
Two weeks from tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow's Tuesday.
Can't wait.
And four PM again on the eighteenth?
Yes, four PM.
But I will let you know, Josh, if that committee together...
Okay, sounds good.
Sorry to drag you in, I'll send you.
Thank you.
All right, Randy, I think we're ready.
How we doing, Cindy?
Feeling pretty good?
Good.
How about yourself?
Just good, not bad.
Had enough snow, we're not getting plows out, it's not a hard day, it's New Year's, so...
You could be out in the gym, plowing a foot of snow right now.
No, I'm fine. Well, you wanna open the truck bids first thing?
Yeah, I'm right here, and we have two bids, Palmer Trucks, and they had everything that was required, and then the other ones Volvo, no.
Volmat.
Volmat, yeah, so they both had everything that's required and everything. I think one was a little, one was about five grand cheaper than the other.
Yeah, did you read that?
What were we...
Price?
One was one seventy-one as a total, and one was one sixty-six as a total.
Okay. Which one was one sixty-six?
That was the one sixty-six.
One was one sixty-six, and one of them was one seventy-one.
There's your total.
Okay.
And that, that was the one seventy-one.
Okay. Looks like the delivery date will be one three of two thousand twenty-two. That ain't quite right, is it?
What's that?
One three of two thousand twenty-two?
It's actually...
Oh, no, okay, I see now.
Yeah.
Fourth quarter of twenty-two, or fourth quarter of twenty-three, so that could be up to March of twenty-three.
Correct, yes.
So we could be looking at, how long?
Till March of twenty-three.
Of twenty-three?
Fifteen months out.
Fifteen months out.
I'm sure this one's about that way too, on Kenworth. I don't see on there, but he was up the other evening and talked to me, said it was gonna be up in twenty-three before we got it.
These tandems?
Yes, tandems. Yeah, I don't see one, but...
Is that complete?
Yeah, completes, complete.
Sand, smother, everything?
Yep, plow, sander, the whole bit. I'll read over.
Yep, you look over, I'll let you know.
Yeah, if you're ready with us.
Yeah, I'll let you know for our next meeting.
That's fine.
After that foundation of bids. You want an extra one more?
You want one more?
You want two?
Just one would be fine.
We accepted asphalt materials, or I recommend accepted asphalt materials, and got another bidder on oils this year too, from Bitmat Products, went ahead and accepted it also.
Sounds good.
Pump Tire Services are only bid on that, so I accepted that. Heritage Oil, got it over Series Solution, that was playing a little bit cheaper. Oil and Grease, Heritage Oil got that over Series Solution. Soda and Gravel, I accepted all over, we always do for, in case somebody's out of it, we can just go somewhere else and get it.
Makes sense.
I accepted E3 Bridge and Civil Con on the culvert bridge materials, and also E&amp;H Bridge and Park County Habergets, only thing we get from Park County Habergets on that is the plastic pipe, it's handy, just go down and get it.
Yep.
Metal Callers didn't accept them, they wouldn't keep the price last year, so we had to buy from the others. And St. Regis, they won a escalator clause, they wanted to raise the prices up and go off. Repair parts, PHK got that.
The, oh shoot, Oil and Grease, Heritage, is that where we got it last year?
No, we had New Yoder, he didn't bid yet.
He didn't bid, he was from Evansville or...
North somewhere, I think it was north.
I thought he was from Evansville.
New Yoder's kind of a homish town, but I name, so, up north of me. Looks good to me. There's a price left too, it should be that too, so, I heard a lot, oh, that's all right.
I have a question, Randy, just out of my own curiosity, because, you know, obviously, we like to keep businesses local as we can, if we can help local businesses, but on Series, were they quite a bit higher than Heritage?
Yeah.
For both the oil and for the...
Yeah, they were.
Okay. I mean, if it was like a penny or two, maybe we could borrow a little bit to help locally companies around here, but...
Two eighty versus two ninety-six on unleaded gas, of course, now this has a less, like a clause of that.
Sure, they all were because of that, yeah.
Diesel, two thirty-eight versus two sixty-eight, the on-road was three fifteen versus three twenty-two, I got down the wrong way, the DEF, two ten versus two eighteen.
So, the material about the money over the course of a year, if you say, well, eight or ten, fifteen cents doesn't sound like much, but when you talk about how many gallons you go through for a year, that starts to add up pretty quickly.
Yeah, it does, and the Series on the chassis loop per tube was four seventy-five a tube, Heritage's a three dollars.
Jeez.
Their gear oil was the same, Series a little bit cheaper on the, no, they're a little higher on the motor oil, six cents higher on the motor oil, and hydraulic oil, Series was twelve sixty-four versus eight twenty-nine.
And we're fine with that, we don't have a problem with that.
I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah, we're splitting pennies, it's just like we talked about before, you know, we got sold away from, Evansville's a long way to go, if they're local, and a penny, and you know you can get it, it's not gonna bother us, but by the time you add all the amount of fuel up to use, it's what you recommend, that's the way we'll go.
Even on the oil sample, we've seen, every time we change oil, we've seen a sample in.
Yeah.
Series is gonna charge nineteen dollars each, or don't cost us anything with Heritage.
Yeah. I was just curious, I was a question, I just, in case I get stopped on the street by some of our Series, because we got a lot of them around here that, that I can at least have.
Well, and I like Series, I mean, I always like, we've had their fuel for years, had any problem with it.
But in the end, they have to be competitive.
We haven't had any problems with Heritage either, we've got fuel tanks.
And they have to be competitive, and we just talked to, you know, joint, you only got so much money, what do you spend on this kind of stuff, the less you have...
It'd hurt them somewhere else.
To put on the road or whatever, so, no problem at all with me, I just was curious, just in case, like I said, if I get asked by somebody, if you don't go local...
Well, I always try to go local, sometimes you're...
Sometimes you just can't do it.
Well, you got your pens all ready?
Yeah, as soon as...
Didn't sound too enthused about that.
No, I'm fine, we're fine. I'll just let Dan look things over, I just, no, I wanna make a motion.
You go ahead and make a motion, I'm just amazed, payload retire sixteen hundred and nine dollars per tire, mind-boggling.
I'll make a motion, we accept the recommendation that Randy's given us for all of our products that we buy through the highway department.
And I'll second that, oh, shoot, carry.
Now we can start signing away.
Will you wanna do this after your meeting?
They don't make any difference.
Jess, you're just here to visit, aren't you?
Do you have something, so you go ahead and then we can finish signing all of this, sign all this, so...
I didn't come prepared to say anything, but keep an eye on the Park Sentinel, hopefully there'll be an announcement here maybe sometime soon about the latest developments.
Okay.
All right.
With that, so Jess can get on out of here.
Over this...
All we're gonna do is sign the papers.
Anyone else have any comments?
We've already made the motion, but I'll make sure we adjourn, and we'll sign these after.
I'll second that. This can get to the power meeting, where you guys can get along.